I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, can everybody please stay standing, I'm sorry. We would like to take a moment. City Hall lost a big member of our family, and his name was Ken Dempsey. You could often find Ken not very visible to probably everyone who walked into City Hall, but really visible to the staff because he was a quiet person, but very important in this building, probably throughout all of the buildings. He often did things that meant a lot to the people that worked here, but were kind of the unsung hero of City Hall. So we want to send our condolences to Ken's family. Ken unexpectedly passed away last week, and so we send our heartfelt condolences to them, and we offer a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Crop.
Here.
Mensah.
Here.
Voorhees.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to our announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. I see that we have our proclamation on Rail Safety Week. Is there anyone from CN here to receive that? I'm assuming not, so I will go ahead and just read that. The proclamation for the National Rail Safety Week. Whereas 2,148 rail grade crossing collisions resulted in 658 personal injuries and were responsible for 238 fatalities in the United States during 2021, and whereas 1,151 trespassing incidences have occurred in the United States resulting in 528 pedestrians being killed and another 623 injured while trespassing on railroad property rights on way during 2021. And whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right-of-ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways and observing, I'm sorry, obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of fatalities and injuries. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of National Rail Safety Week. Now therefore, I, Laura Crop, Mayor of City Mount Clemens, on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby attest my full support, proclaiming September 19th to the 25th, 2022 National Rail Safety Week, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. I'll move, I'm sorry, I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor Crop, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
This is the portion of the meeting for public participation. We ask if you would like to address the commission, that you come to the microphone, you give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. We'll see those in public first, and then we'll go to Zoom. Anyone who would like to, come on up.
Thank you, Eric Rick, 1689 Hampton, Mount Clemens, Michigan. With regard to the Administrative Hearing Board and Civil Infractions, I think moving forward with the Administrative Hearing Board would be the right call because when you look at the list of infractions and issues, so many of them are very minor and not the kinds of things that going to district court and dealing with all that, I feel like a lot, if it's issues that need a rake and a shovel and stuff, it's not the kind of thing we need to go to the court for. And if it is something big enough to go to the court, maybe include in the final, not legislation, the final code, something, some appeal process that would allow it to move on to courts, which may already be in there if I missed it, sorry. But it seems like most of what you're dealing with is smaller stuff. So just having a local administrative hearings board can work through the bulk of that, even if it's not all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to Zoom. Okay, I will entertain a motion to, oh, sorry, administrative responses, Mr. Shipman.
At the August 15, 2022 commission meeting during public comments, several residents from Riverside Drive reported flooding problems in their basements and wanted to know what could be done about the situation. So the utilities director, the city engineer, and I met with the residents to hear their concerns. We've evaluated the problem and are in the process of working towards a solution. We will keep the residents informed as we progress towards a resolution.
Is there anyone who have any questions for Mr. Shipman? After that big storm that knocked out everybody's power, did we hear from them? Did they have any major issues, or did what we did?
We did not hear. We did manage to do a couple things before then, but I think we only got about a half inch of rain out of all that, so.
More wind?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for addressing that, I wanted to.
For sure.
Okay, moved on to approval of minutes.
I move to approve the August 15 work session and regular City Commission meeting minutes for August 15, 2022.
Support.
Anybody have any questions or comments? All right, well, call the roll, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to 9A, but before I entertain a motion, I'd like kind of the commission to note that there are four separate, that's why there's like space in between each motion, and we need to do four separate motions, so.
So call.
So, yeah, do one at a time. Does that make sense? Okay, so I'll entertain one motion.
I move to approve the retail water and sewer rates resolution as presented.
So I'll second it.
Okay, any questions or comments on that one? Call the roll, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve the wholesale water rates resolution as presented.
Support.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments on that one? Go ahead. Mr. Dempsey, no?
No.
Okay, you look confused. Okay, you look like you had something to say. Okay, call the roll, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Okay, number three.
I move to approve the vector and septic collar rates resolution as presented.
Support.
Anybody, any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Okay, number four.
I move to approve the miscellaneous fees resolution as presented.
Support.
Anyone have any questions? Roll call.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the monthly water and sewer billing. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the adoption of the resolution establishing monthly water and sewer rate billing.
Support.
Mr. Shipman?
So the city administration is requesting adoption of the attached resolution to charge and collect water and sewer rates and charges on a monthly basis rather than the current quarterly billing process. It is believed that this change will be beneficial to the city's water customers as well as reduce the volume and frequency of delinquent water bill payments. It will also help residents track water loss, getting billed monthly versus, you know, waiting three months to see the bill if they had a leak or something going on they didn't know about.
That's a good point.
Did you have questions?
I have a question in that the billing will be going out monthly, correct?
Correct.
I had a condo, which we just sold, but we have a, had a condo in Port Austin where the, where the billing, they would automatically charge my checking account. And there was no fee involved in that. You just set it up with, you know.
Like automatic bill pay?
Yeah, like, I think we were with Comerica, when Comerica would charge my checking account at Genesis Credit Union for that bill purchase, rather than writing a check every month and mailing it in. The statement that was sent to me, actually that was even sent via email, so they didn't have to mail it out, and then it would, and then charge my checking account on a certain date. Have we looked into that, you know, for ease of payment for?
Well, I know, and I'm not sure what you're talking about. I used to set up my payments that way through the credit union because the credit union offered that service. And, and that's how I used to actually pay all my bills, just like you're saying. But that was something I set up personally through the credit.
Well, this, this was set up by the Port Austin Water and Sewer Authority.
We can definitely check on it. I mean, the, normally what you see is any billing process, if there's no fee associated with something like a credit card, it's because the municipality is absorbing it.
Okay. Or, or there's something worked out with the financial institution.
What do we do now? So right now it's not automatic at all?
I think it's online bill pay, right?
Yeah.
You can go on and pay online.
Yeah, but there's a service fee.
You can do that through your bank, but I think there's a service fee for that, is there not?
Yes.
There is a fee here, I think.
Or is it a fee here?
If you set it up with your bank, if you set it up with your bank to take it out, I don't know if there's a fee.
If, if you're doing it through your bank, there's no fee.
Right, but if you do it on the website.
What about here?
I don't believe so, no. No, and, and again, not handling the, we don't have anybody for billing, but if you.
You have to check with somebody that has the same last name as you.
If you, I mean, you can even, if you call in, and, and I think you can even call in and pay by.
But there's a fee associated.
Check, and there's no fee. It's the credit card where you get the fee because that's, that's an agency that provides that service.
Oh, yeah, here it is. Invoice cloud processing fees, credit or debit. Online water, $4.50 per $400. Parking tickets, 2.95% or $1.95 per minute. Taxes, 2.75 or $1.95 per minute. By phone for water is $4.50 per 400 plus 45 cents. Taxes, 2.75% plus 45 cents.
But your point is you want to stop.
So there, yeah, so there are fees.
Yeah, I think it's more efficient and it's more, the money goes straight into the account without any handling and can be posted, if it's, which I'm sure under our system it can be done. It would, I would love that.
Well, yeah, it says right here, save time with Auto Pay, available for e-check and credit card, so you can set that up through the city.
But you have to.
But you still pay the fee. But you still pay.
But there's a fee on the city side.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I don't know how a little, a little podunk town like Port Austin could have something set up, you know, with the bank or financial institution that charged my account and didn't, I didn't pay any fee.
Well, if you're going to pay by credit card, the credit card company is going to take some of that fee, right?
They did my checking account.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I just want to make clear that when we talk about a credit card, though. I mean, we can check on it.
No, I know. I think, I think we need to approach Comerica Bank and see what, what, since they are our bank, what, what they could do for us. You know, and, and I agree that the quicker we get this money in, the better off we are. And it's better, you know, rather than paying, I think I paid about $200 for, you know, per, per water bill.
Quarter.
Quarterly, it would be better to pay, you know, $57.50 or whatever it is. But I think that we need to check and see if, if Comerica can cut us a deal and, and not charge us.
Absolutely.
I think a lot of it is our system here. We have to set up the system and to go out to, you give, you give the city your bank account and routing number. Like, if you do it for DTE or consumers, or there's a lot of places that do it, and then the city uses that to go in and plunk it out of your account every month.
Or you can release it.
Yeah.
Like, I don't let them plunk it, I release it.
Plunk or release, either way, I, you know, I would love it.
But I, I, and I do too. And, and they tell you what date it is, and it's zapped out of your account. But I, with this, there's, there's a fee involved.
Yeah. Any credit card transaction has a fee. It just depends whether the retailer or the business owner wants to pass that fee on. And here we pass it on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to, yeah, I don't want to gum at the death, but I think that.
Yeah, you want us to look into working out something with our, our institution and see if we can.
I want the finance director to contact Comerica Bank and see if they can come up with some type of deal for us on the water bills.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, anybody have any other questions or comments? Because we have a motion on the floor. Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the Metro Act Right-of-Way Permit Extension. I'll entertain a motion.
I approve and authorize interim city manager to execute the letter extension agreement extending the existing Metro Act Right-of-Way Permit between the city and MCI Metro Access Transmission Services LLC, Horizon Access Transmission Services.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Shipman?
So this is a five-year extension on existing contract that would commence July 18, 2022, ending July 17, 2027. And it enables MCI Metro Access Transmission Services to continue construction, installation, and maintenance of telecommunications facilities within the city's right-of-way in accordance with the terms and conditions of the permit, which I did include the original agreement for your review in there.
Anybody have any questions or comments, or Mr. Shipman? There's no tabs?
No, this is pretty standard. It's almost exactly the same as last year.
Okay. All right, call the roll.
This is a state, based on the state statute, that was enacted in 2002. That statute said that no metropolitan, no municipality shall enact, maintain, or enforce an ordinance applicable to telecommunications providers that's inconsistent with this act and assesses, or assesses fees or requires other consideration for access or use to the public right-of-way that are in addition to the fees in this act. The fees in the act call for a one-time-only $500 permit fee. They paid that when they got the original permit. Only thing, the, in addition, the act sets forth that they, all of these providers are to pay maintenance fees. The maintenance fees go to the state of Michigan. Then there is a formula where the state of Michigan is supposed to annually drivel out a portion to the municipalities based on linear feet, you know, how many feet of right-of-way you have. So we don't, we don't even know if the city's even getting that. They should be, and I'm sure it's not going to be a ton of money, but.
They'll throw us our quarter.
People often ask, why aren't we charging more, or can we charge more? And that's the answer, you can't.
It's the same formula they use for the ARPAPHONS, so we owe them money now.
Right, exactly, exactly. All right, does anybody have any questions or comments other than? Never mind, it's not even appropriate to the state of Michigan. So, no, hearing none, go ahead, roll call, please.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the MML Annual Meeting. So, there's not really a motion, so.
Are you volunteering?
Oh.
Yeah, we have to pick a commissioner or, or the mayor.
Right, there's something, we have to fill in the blank.
Yeah, before you can make a motion.
Somebody want an all-expense-paid trip to Muskegon, Michigan?
Glamorous, on October 19th to the 21st. Is anyone interested? Yeah, it's not, this isn't, I guess we should talk about it really quickly, but if anyone, if no one is interested in attending the municipal league's annual meeting, which is in Muskegon, and from October 19th through the 21st, then we will simply skip this agenda item.
You don't count your vote. I mean, it's, it's an assembly, so they say.
Right, it's basically a conference, right?
Everybody say "I" or "A" or whatever.
Yeah.
So it isn't like Mount Clemens didn't say anything.
Right, right, right. It's essentially a conference, but there's not really any learning opportunities.
I'll be in Daytona.
A representative.
Have you attended?
Well.
I have not attended. I've attended their CAP conference, but not their convention.
Not Daytona.
I'll be in Daytona.
I'll be on the opposite side of the state.
I went to the one in Muskegon, and they had a year ago.
We didn't have to work. My, but, wrong, you're retired.
I have a bad hand.
Okay, so from what I'm, from what I'm hearing, there's not anybody interested in attending this convention, so we will, is everyone okay with me going, moving on to item E?
Yes.
You can get the information from the workshops, and they can share that with us. So there's some interesting workshops, we can get the material through MML.
Yeah, on their website, everything will be. Okay, well, then I'm going to go ahead and move on to purchases and payments of invoice, since I didn't hear anybody's interest in the annual meeting. I will entertain a motion for that.
Moved or approved purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Fournier? Did I hear that? Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments about purchases and payments?
I'm just wondering how Mr. Saff has given us a $46,000 break here. I appreciate it.
So the carrier we had was no longer going to be involved in municipal coverage, so we had to go out to bids and find a different carrier. And he had sent out a pretty extensive list of information and questionnaire requests from all departments, which took quite a few weeks to assemble. And when he came out to bid, he actually, it was like Christmas that he actually was able to save us $46,000, and we actually gained cyber coverage, which we didn't have before as well. So it's not often we come to you with purchases and payments with good news, but we have it this time, so.
We'll take it.
Take it before they change their mind.
Get help toward the Fishbait Study.
Yeah, exactly. Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we will call the roll, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Entertain a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Shipman, city manager's report.
I'm pleased to announce that the grand opening of the Play Fountain was a big success. Thank you to advancing McComb, artist Stephanie Sukat Felcheck, Jeff Wood and the Mount Clemens DPW for all the work on the project. Final landscaping will begin after yesterday, so you'll see some changes out there as far as the landscaping goes. Our new Parks and Recreation Coordinator, Amanda Bauer, started last week. We're excited to have her in place and on the team. We have hired a second, the second new maintenance worker for the Utilities Department. The Fire Department was awarded an AFG grant in the amount of $32,240 for the purchase of rescue equipment. That grant has 5% matching fund requirement. Upcoming events, September 10th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, the 30th Annual Mount Clemens Grand Prix Soapbox Derby located at 40 Crocker Boulevard. Also on September 10th, from 7:30 AM to 11:00 AM, will be the Mount Clemens Fire Department Soapbox Derby Pancake Breakfast. That'll be at the fire station located on 2 Dickinson. Downtown Fall Art and Craft Show, Friday, September 9th, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Saturday, September 10th, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, there will be live music Friday night and all day Saturday. The Uptown Friday Night Concert Series continues September 9th from 7:00 to 9:00 on the Fountain Stage on McComb Place, featuring Soul Commission with Kathleen Murray. Also Friday night on September 16th, from 7:00 to 9:00 on the Fountain Stage, featuring APR with Liz Smith. A reminder that September is Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. You will see teal-colored ribbons throughout the downtown to help promote awareness to the signs and symptoms of ovarian cancer. And also on Sunday, September 11th, there will be the fallen, or the 9/11 ceremony at the Fallen Heroes Memorial that begins at 3 o'clock.
Thank you very much. We will move on to our second opportunity for the public to address the commission. All that we ask is you come forward, give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our two-minute rule. We'll again first address the people in public, and then we will go to Zoom. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll go to Zoom. Nobody on Zoom, okay, excellent. We will move on to our commissioners' comments. Mr. Campbell?
I would like to say we had a meeting before this one regarding code enforcement issues and administrative hearing board, et cetera. Whatever it takes to make the cities better-looking than it already is and moving forward to, instead of dragging our feet in things, whatever it takes to do, I am in favor of because residents want action. They don't want talk, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond?
I just want to wish all the children that are going back to school, that went back to school today, a safe and healthy school year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier?
Thank you. I too hope that we take next steps as two other are going to do this administrative hearing board, and so we just keep this moving and, and get a decision as quickly as possible so it doesn't languish anymore, because I agree, I think our citizens want to see something done. And I want to remind everyone that on September 22nd is the annual Anton Art Center Party, and it's always a fun event, and I hope everyone has got their tickets, especially everyone at this table. They've done some changes this year, and this is their major fundraising event for the year, and it means a lot to them, and we are working very hard. Tickets are available. You can call me, call anyone at the center, they all have tickets. So thank you very much for your support there. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Dempsey?
I just want to thank Captain Shipman for the presentation. It was.
I just want to thank, um, Captain Shipman for the presentation. It was interesting. And I too would like to just go a little further into looking into it with some questions that I still have. So if we can set something up down the road, I'd appreciate that. Um, I think it's really important, and I know that I had, it's been a long time, but I have talked to, um, Mr. Hurd about this years ago when we first looked into it. But I know things have changed, so I would just, just have a lot more questions before we jump into the expenses and everything. And I think when, if and when we do this, we have to make sure that we really get the information out to the public. I'm always worried when we don't get enough information out to the public and they get hit with things, so, so I appreciate that you, um, gave us that presentation. So thank you. And I hope to meet the new director of recreation. Hopefully, uh, she could come to a meeting so she could be introduced, so the residents could also meet her.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Mayor Krapp. I too would like to extend my deepest sympathy to the family and to all the employees here at City Hall on the passing of Ken Sepesey. I've known Ken since Mount Clemens High School, and I will miss his smile and kind words. God bless him, and may he rest in peace. Once a bather, always a bather. The all-class reunion will be held at Fred Fox's Rec Bowl this Friday. I will join my fellow classmates from the class of nineteen sixty-nine as we arrive early and leave early. On tonight's agenda, we reappointed several citizens to various city committees. I would like to express my thanks to you, Mayor Krapp, for the appointments, and to the citizens for stepping up to the plate and giving of their time and talents to make Mount Clemens a great place to live. And with that, once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Mensah?
So, right now, our Mount Clemens High football team is one and one, and, um, the next game is actually, our homecoming game is on Friday, the twenty-third, at seven PM. There are some festivities in the works prior to, um, there's, uh, some work being done on, you know, a parade in floats, but, uh, um, you know, that's still in the very early planning stages. But it would be really awesome if people would go out to that game on the twenty-third at seven PM with signs and cheers and let our guys know that we're here for them. And, um, that's it. I hope everybody had a good Labor Day, and I'll see you guys all on nine-eleven.
Thank you. Um, I want to, uh, thank Advancing Macomb for the, all of the work that they did with the Splash Fountain. Um, every time I drive by and there's kids running in that fountain, it's, it's an exciting thing to see in Mount Clemens. Um, also, at the, um, grand opening, we also had an announcement from Green Macomb that they are going to, um, help fund all of the landscaping, uh, that's gonna go around the, uh, the new fountain. So we're really excited about that, and it, it really shows how much partnership really went into that, um, with, so how many people contributed. We had over a hundred different donors that gave to that, um, Splash Fountain. And so the collaboration of the community to bring that fountain to Mount Clemens is something that's really exciting to see. Um, I'd like to, of course, welcome Amanda Bowers and our new maintenance worker to the team at, the team at the city. We're really excited to work with, uh, all of these new members and what they bring to the table, so. Um, I will have a coffee talk, uh, coming up, uh, returning to an evening coffee talk, so I have one Thursday, September eighth, because that's the second Thursday. So Thursday, the September eighth, at six-thirty PM at Black Cat Coffee, um, and then Tuesday, September thirteenth, at nine-thirty AM at John's Family Grill. So if you wanted to, uh, talk about the current events happening in Mount Clemens, uh, looking forward to seeing everybody there. Um, I too will be attending the September twenty-second of the Art Party, as well as on September twenty-second is the Macomb Business Awards, and there are several Mount Clemens businesses being represented, um, who are up for awards for the Mount Clemens, uh, sorry, the Macomb County Business Awards. So I'm looking forward to seeing all of our, hopefully, the Mount Clemens businesses sweeping the categories. So, um, and if you want Art Party tickets, you can call Commissioner Fournier, but you can also go on the Anton Art, AntonArtCenter.org website and order them online there. So, uh, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.